I will go ahead and open the meeting of the Northampton Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is David Blumberg. And joining me are Elizabeth Silver, Barry Smith, Bob Riddle, and our staff support is provided by Carolyn Mish. We expect Sarah Northrup to be joining us as well. And we'll give her a couple of minutes while we just attend to a couple of other items. For the -- we only have one application on the agenda today. And once we get to that application, the applicant will first be given an opportunity to speak, and then the board will ask questions. And then members of the public who have questions or comments will also have an opportunity to present those to the board. And I'll ask that anyone who speaks give their name and address for the record that we're keeping up the meeting. Okay? We're actually supposed to start with public comment, right?
Yeah.
So if there is anyone here who has any comments to make about anything other than the application that is on our agenda, because there will be time for that. This is an open -- we start the meeting with an open public comment, period. So is there anyone here who has general comments that do not relate to the application that's pending this evening before the board? I see none, so we'll move on. What we could quickly do is have a motion to approve the minutes of the...
There were two sets.
There were two sets. November 13th.
And January 1st.
And January 8th. A motion to approve all...
Move to approve.
Both of them, okay.
The second.
Second, Elizabeth. All in favor of approving. That's unanimous. Thank you. I don't want people to wait too long, so...
Yeah. I mean, you can start, and I think if there's, you know, two or three minutes of comment or presentation, you know, that can be covered later, or, you know, I don't see that as an issue to be addressed.
Okay.
Commentarily, I would say, let me just check my emails, see if there's something. Just give me a second here.
If Sarah does not make it in time, we should decide who's voting on that.
I did it last week.
Would you like to? So if Sarah Northrup does not get here in time, the voting members and associate member voting on this application will be Elizabeth Silver, Barry Smith, and me. So I think we'll go ahead and open the hearing on the application for a special permit, home business for beer brewing and fermentation with non-resident employee, 86 Lake Street, Florence, Sessors Map ID 17A-245. So is the applicant present? If you could just come up to the podium and speak into the mic. And again, if everyone could give your name and address for the record. And first, if you could give, and if you could give us a summary of your request, your application, and then we'll have a chance first for the board to ask the questions that we have. Go ahead.
My name is John Warner. I'm the owner at 86 Lake Street in Florence. The nature of the request is that we'd like to have a special permit to operate a microbrewery. We've been homebrewing here, but we wanted to get permission from the town before we move on and try to become legal with the federal authorities and the state. Figured it'd be best to start this way. The brewery is a 15-gallon brewery at the moment. We've been brewing about once a month. We don't hope, we don't plan to increase to more than about twice a month, often during the day and on the weekend. We do not plan to have any retail sales, any tastings, or any beer dispensed on the property. All supplies would be self-obtained, I guess. No big deliveries or anything like that. You know, we want to keep traffic to a minimum. And like I said, basically continue what we've been doing as homebrewers, increase the frequency somewhat, and, you know, have the, have permission from the town to have a small business there. Details, I missed. This is my partner.
Just improve the concept.
Yeah. The idea is that this wouldn't be a permanent home for the brewery. This would be a way that we can get beer to market and create proof of concept, see if we can sell beer. And if so, we'll move on to a more permanent location that's not, you know, in our neighborhood. That's sort of our goal.
Questions? Questions from the board members?
You said you've already been homebrewing.
Mm-hmm.
To what degree and for how long?
We moved some equipment into there about a year and a half ago. And we, right now, brew once a month every six weeks.
So when you say once a month, that's like a batch?
So, sorry, yeah. So I should explain, a brew day is about a six to eight hour day. And then we brew on one day a month. And then the beer takes time to ferment, it ferments in the basement. So the, I'm specifically addressing the brew day, I guess, because of concerns about traffic and odors and things like that. But yeah, once a month, we spend six to eight hours brewing a batch of beer, which later ferments and is either kegged or bottled.
And are you making any alterations to your house to accommodate this increased intensity of use?
Uh, no. It's, I mean, it's, oh, the only alterations have been moving brewing equipment into the garage, which is fed from a hose from the house. And the beer is stored in closed vessels in the house. And that's it right now. We don't have any large-scale cleaning apparatus or anything like that. There's not need for huge drains or anything because of the scale is so small.
How much water will you need?
I think thirty...
Who's, uh, three to one?
Three to one. So the industry standard is three to one gallons of water per beer produced. So that's cleaning and beer. So say it's a 15-gallon batch, we start with around 30 gallons of water, plus another 15 or so for cleaning and chilling the beer before it gets yeast added to it.
And what about the intensity of the wastewater?
The, most of the wastewater is just half-water. The cleaner that we primarily use is a product known as Star Sand. The amounts we use are very small. We've put a, it's, I don't know if it's relevant, we put a quarter ounce of that into five gallons of water, and that lasts us about a month. And that's not disposed of until the end of the month.
And how is it disposed of?
Down the, in the drain.
And is that an organic material? Is it...
It's, I don't know the full name. It's, um, it's a long name. It's phenol something, something acid. It's a somewhat weak acid. It's a food-grade cleaner.
So it's used by, in restaurants?
Yes, exactly, yes.
And does it have a smell?
It does not. It's odorless.
What does generate smells from what you're doing?
The only smells that we smell are during a brew day. While the grain is mashing, it smells like bread, more or less. And then while the beer is brewing, there's smell in the garage. We haven't smelled it outside of the house, or outside of the garage. But those are really the only smells. Fermentation is essentially odorless because it happens in a closed vessel, where only carbon dioxide escapes. So those are really smells.
When do you plan to increase your production from once to twice a month?
Um, as soon as, I would say, the next six months. As we get, if we, if this goes through, then we would apply with the TTV, the Tax and Trade Bureau, and then with the State AVCC, and then we'd go from there.
And are you aware of all of the comments that we've gotten, the opposition?
Yes.
Okay. And what do you, I don't know if you want to take them now or after people have an opportunity to speak, David? I don't know if you want to deal with this, you know, how do you want to deal with this procedurally, but...
Could I just ask a question?
Yeah. Let me just settle how we want to deal with that.
Well, does your question relate to this, or...
Yeah, sure. So together, um, so...
I mean, to the, does your question relate to this procedural question?
Relates to what he's already told us with respect to...
That's all, okay.
Sure. So every brew day, then, you use 30 gallons of water and then an additional 50?
Yes.
And that's really all the water and sewage capacity that you're content to use, or you expect to use?
That's correct. And we have run these numbers. The water department guys, water treatment guys, were CC'd on one of the emails, and I did run the process by them, both the cleaners that we use and the water usage. Some of that water is absorbed by the grain and goes into a compost pile. It's not all just going down the drain and getting wasted. We hope to reclaim some of that water as we get a little more sophisticated. Some of that cooling water can be reused for our next batch. We just haven't built anything for, to do that yet.
And have you received any complaints?
Until this, until the notices went out, no. Not that I know of. I haven't heard anything, any complaints.
I'm sort of neutral on the question of do we, do we let the public speak first and then have the applicant respond to questions and concerns, or have the applicant sort of give a preliminary or anticipatory response?
Bob has an opinion.
Yeah, Bob?
How many bottles of beer do you, does a batch make?
Around 150 bottles, if all of it is bottled.
And then what, where do those bottles go now?
They, now they go in my house.
And then you, so you just have two years batches of bottles in your house?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, some of it gets drank, some of it gets given to friends and family. We actually planned, for this, we planned a keg more than beer. And we would keep kegs, and we would get, like to get kegs in the restaurants. So it's not like we'd have bottles, you know, overflowing in every room in the house.
And you would put it in your car, in your garage?
Exactly. So with the, the...
And drive it to a restaurant?
The state license, the farmer-brewer license, and that would give us license to self-distribute. So we would get a permit for the car and for the person, and we'd be able to distribute on our own.
And you would be the distributor?
Yes.
And is it just in a passenger car, or are you getting a truck?
Our understanding is that we can use a passenger car once it's permitted for that purpose, and that would be our, that was how we began. We wouldn't buy a truck at this stage, you know, underneath the space.
And you said something about deliveries being minimal because you're going to procure supplies?
Well, that was one of the concerns that was raised that I had heard, was, you know, just increase traffic on our street. It's a side street. We wouldn't have, you know, pallet trucks unloading pallets of kegs and bottles. Everything that we, that we get is either bought from local suppliers, we get them all from a local supplier, some supplies from the homebrew store downtown, and UPS.
And UPS.
Yeah.
And so, right now, if you doubled your production, that would be like four half kegs a month if you'd be taking them, right? Four eight-gallon kegs.
Uh, it's a mess. So a 15-gallon batch, we use six-les, they're called, it's a six-foil barrel. So it's a five-gallon keg. And that's about two cases of beer, but in one vessel. Correct, yeah. It's like a soda keg, a traditional soda keg.
So as I understand it, Carolyn, the only reason the applicant has to come before us with this request is because he is going to be using employees to assist him. Otherwise, he could do this as of right without going before this board and, or I guess any other board.
Right.
So for, begs the question, you obviously feel the need that you have to have employees?
Well, no, it's actually, it's my, this is Tim McDowell, my future business partner. There won't be, if he's not an employee as such, it would be a partnership. So I wasn't aware that, until recently, that that was the reason that we were getting, having to get a permit.
So is he going to be physically assisting you on the premises with the production?
Yes, or I am, but yes, it'll be him and I on those days, yes.
How often will he be there? One day a month, or...
One, I mean, a few other days that, you know, when we have to do, when we have to move beer around in the house, he comes over. No, not much more than just as a, you know...
So it's, yeah, and Barry's pointing out it's employees or partners are included in the triggering. So, and clearly, from a business standpoint, the reason you want to do something that to the neighbors, I'm sure appears like running a business in a residential neighborhood, is because you don't want to commit to signing a lease for commercial space until you've determined if this business plan and the product will be successful.
That's right.
But the only thing that this board is tasked with, I hate to use a noun as a verb, is to determine whether the requirements under the Northampton zoning ordinance for the allowance of a home business have been satisfied. So I say that sort of for everybody's benefit, as well as for a reminder for the board members, that the applicant could do this without asking anyone's permission if he wasn't going to have his partner assisting him. And, and the only thing that we are obligated to do, or the thing, the task that we are obligated to perform, is to make a determination as to whether the conditions for a home business are satisfied by the, by the application.
It seems to me, in reviewing the ordinance, that there are a couple of things that are important for us to consider. One is mandatory that it's one time, the first permit is for up to a year, is that right?
It's not mandatory.
It's not? I thought...
But we have the option.
You have the option.
Didn't it used to be?
It used to be that you would...
Used to be mandatory, but we have the option of limiting the time to determine if there are objections, or complaints, or violations. Certainly violations would be actionable by the zoning enforcement officer, the building inspector, without any further involvement by us. But in any case, I'm saying that as preface. Go ahead. Elizabeth, you had a couple more you wanted to highlight.
There's that, and then the other one that I think is important is L under 350, or under the definition of home business. It shall produce no noise, obnoxious odors, vibrations, glare, fumes, or electrical interference, which would be detectable to normal sensory perception beyond the lot line. And I think that's where the comments that we've gotten, to the extent that they pertain to the definition of home business and then the limitations, that's, that's what would, I think, get triggered.
Right. So that helps sort of narrow the focus, perhaps. Although those are speculative. But with that as preface, are we ready to hear from...
It does, but just to have something with that. That those people who are concerned about odors and all of those things should realize that if we do grant the permit, and there's any odors that go beyond the lot line, then you can immediately call the building inspector and get an enforcement action on it.
Right. So it's not like there is no recourse. But with that, again, as sort of preface, why don't we, unless there's anything else, you'll have a chance to speak later.
No, that's great. I mean, everyone should...
So I'll ask, one at a time, if members of the public would like to come up and, if you'll introduce yourself, name an address, and just give your, give us your comments or questions. And please direct all comments and questions to the board, not to the applicant, and then we can ask the applicant's further questions. So would anyone like to speak?
Evening. I have a bit of a cold, so I'm sorry. I'll try to speak up. Julia Andrus. I live on, actually, 22 Pioneer Knolls in Florence. But I'm staying here on behalf of my father Floyd Andrus, who lives just across the street from the applicant, Mr. Warner. He's, yeah, he's out of state. And I would add, I guess that eventually I will inherit the house, but I hope that it's quite a long time from now. But I just would like to, and I know the members have, must have read the materials submitted, and I don't want to restate those from the materials, but just a couple, a couple of comments from what Mr. Warner said about the chemicals in the water. First of all, the spec sheets that come with the chemicals, I reviewed them, and one of the spec sheets requires that that chemical be flushed with large amounts of water, and that's what the spec sheet says. And of particular concern on the street, as you've seen from all of the materials submitted, is the infrastructure. The sewer here is miserable. And I remember from when I lived there, I lived in that, in that house of my, you know, my folks. And it's been that way, and it's only getting worse. So Mr. Warner says he's got, you know, this small amount of water that he's using for the brewing, but that's going to be growing exponentially as he brews more. This is going to put absolute, you know, strain to a breaking point, I think, on the sewer. He has to flush those chemicals he's using, those chemicals he's using in the water. That's one comment to that.
Can I just stop and ask you something?
Sure.
Because I've pulled up the attachment on, on Star Sand, and I'm not seeing what you're referring to. In the general use directions, it says a dilution of one ounce to five gallons of water.
I'm not sure if, I'm sorry.
So I'm not sure, when you say it needs to be flushed, can you direct me?
I'm not sure if it was the Star Sand or was the DPW, because that's another chemical that is going to be used.
That's here, too.
So there are two, two chemicals that are using. I don't have those materials with me.
Because you're saying, the reason I'm curious, and I'm sure my fellow board members, is you're, you're using terms like exponential increase in volume on the sewer system. I, that's not what I heard from the applicant, and that's why I think it's worth, you know, getting our facts straight here instead of pure speculation.
Well, in his materials, he states he's got a one, two, three-year plan, and that's, I mean, that's going to require, you know, more water. The more he brews, or the more he needs cleaned, the more water he's going to use, the more chemicals he's going to use, and he's going to need to flush those things down the sewer.
Well, here's one of the things that I'm seeing on the DPW, under general use directions. Under circulation cleaning, it says use one to three ounces per gallon depending on soil load. And then under carbon removal, I don't know if that's something that's applicable, says use six to eight ounces per gallon of water. And then it says when using DPW in food processing areas, the equipment that has been cleaned must be rinsed with portable water, as part of use, sanitize the equipment according to the portable health standards. Is that, do you think, is that what you're referring to?
No, I think I saw on one of the spec sheets that it said large amounts of water.
And that's not emergency per state, you're, I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's flushing it down the drain, yeah.
I think Carolyn had a comment.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that you guys need to get into the scientific analysis of what's a lot and what's not a lot, and what chemicals require what kind of flushing, because I think it probably takes potentially a detailed degree about that. I will say that DPW has to analyze all the compounds that are coming into the sewage treatment plant. And so they have to know, you know, through production, what's coming into the system, how it's, you know, how much capacity there is, whether it can be handled.
Right. And have we heard from DPW about this application?
Yes. So DPW looked at the submittal about all the components that were going to be used for the cleaning, for, you know, the whole processing, and the amount of water that would take. And their response was the amount of water for this production is minutely small compared to single-family residential use and water consumption. And, you know, as an example, indicated that if someone accidentally leaves their hose on at night and runs it overnight, that will consume more water than this process in a year. So just one overnight oops on a homeowner.
But we're talking about two different issues, I think. Consumption of water and burden, added burden to the sewage system.
Right. And I think, and from their sewage system analysis, it's very small, well, because you're flushing, the amount of water that's being flushed with the components is very small as well. So there's, and the components themselves are not a problem for the city. But, but added to that, so they also look at discharge, meaning the volume of what's coming through, whether the system can handle it, but also what the compounds within it.
And their cognizance specifically of dislocation, which we're hearing has had problems in the past with their sewer lines?
Well, I could, I could address that, Mr. Blumberg. Apparently, my father spoke to Mr. Valetta, and Mr. Valetta was unaware of all of the problems on the street in terms of backup. And I think probably, you know, six out of eight people here have had backups.
Into their homes.
Within the last several years, into their homes.
And what, what was the cause of the backup? Was it determined?
Strain on the system. Strain on the system, roots, old clay pipes. The DPW has stated at the time that my father has backup, that this, this system is going to require yearly maintenance. And I'm not sure that that has happened, but that's what this system requires. So, so the DPW wasn't aware.
Okay. I want to put, the water thing, just let me just show you, tell you what I came up with, just for edification, irrespective of, I understand DPW is not that concerned. But here's what I'm seeing on this large amount of water, the reference to that. It's under spill or leak procedures. And it says under spill, wear dust masks, mask, and safety equipment, sweep-up material, or the, flushed residue to sewer with large amount of water. That's the only reference I'm seeing to that. So is that possible, what you're referring to?
It's possible, what I'm thinking I read, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
And also, I understand that, that the issue with having this as of right is also may need a little bit of explanation to me, because I think that under home business, it can be decided on a case-by-case basis if there's the possibility that there will be public service or utility demand, traffic, parking congestion, noise, and air pollution. So, you know, I'm not sure what the city has planned for this being a business as of right, and plus the, the odors, L, that you referred to as...
Well, it's being said for, as a matter of right, is that it's not now being operated as a business. They're not selling any of the beer, they're giving it away, they're giving it to friends and all like that. And they can keep on doing that, they could, they could brew 15 gallons every day and still sort of be within...
And use the same materials and the same volume of water, or more if it's every single day.
And I guess the actions of the neighbors then...
But I don't think we want to get into whether...
That the actions of the neighbors would be civil action for...
But that's, I suppose that's true for nuisance, or some sort of, again, request for an enforcement action by the building inspector.
Right. What I was trying to do is address those issues that Mr. Warner stated, and what I'm, you know, asked to represent to the board in terms of the water, the sewer, the chemicals, which had an odor. Mr. Warner said that they didn't, but they do. which had an odor, Mr. Warner said that they didn't, but they do, and, you know, the fermenting and the brewing process has an odor.
But since this has been going on for a year and a half or something like that, do you know of anyone who has complained of noxious odors coming from there?
On the day that he brews?
I say, I don't live there, so I would leave that to those people who live there to address that, if they wanted to address that, so. But those are the issues that I have, that I think the board, you know, needs to consider.
Thank you.
Any other questions today?
Thank you, finally, for the letter. It was a very well-written letter.
Yeah, we received a letter, which I won't read, but it's in the file, and board members have reviewed them, both from Mr. Andres and also from Ms. Sarah at sixty-eight Lake Street, S-E-R-R-A.
And we've gotten a few, a couple other comments as well that came through.
Through email, yeah. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And, yes, ma'am.
Good evening, I'm Joanne Tann, I live at eighty-two Lake Street, directly next door. I'd like to address your concern about if anyone noticed anything, and I will tell you that I spend a lot of time out in my organic garden, directly across from the garage, where the brewery would take place. I also have a background in cool, and I can't speak to the elders this past year because I just had foot surgery and I'm recovering from a total knee replacement. So, I haven't been out in my yard for the past year and a half, the way I used to be. But I'm going to share my concern, and I mean no animus to my neighbor, and it's very difficult to discuss this, but I have a concern that there are a nice couple with a couple of young children who don't seem to be fully aware of the impact they've had on their neighbors, and I'm not sure how deeply they respect the needs of their neighbors. For example, they own chickens that they've been putting out, who walk all around the neighborhood, and I have two big dogs who go crazy in our living room when the chickens are in our yard.
But, excuse me, ma'am, how does that relate to this application?
I think that the couple is minimizing what they're doing and what their plans are. And I want to differ as to how truthful they're being.
I see.
Okay?
Yes.
And I think that comes to the core of the issue. Who is going to determine how fast this business is going to grow? Who is going to determine when fifteen gallons becomes thirty gallons, or, you know, sixty gallons, or hundred gallons? And are they willing to respect any guidelines that the city sets? And how willing are they going to be to respect their neighbors? And that's a concern for me, because I care about my backyard, and I care about the value of my property. I care about what fumes go in the air, and I will tell you that since I live in the middle of the street, and the casket company is at the far end, there are days with the winds where I smell the fumes from the varnish.
But you've never smelled any fumes from me?
I haven't been outside in the past year and a half.
Have you talked with anybody who's smelled any fumes?
I haven't asked anyone. I've been homebound a lot.
Well, we might get a chance to.
We might get a chance for something, ma'am.
I'm sorry, you know.
But, I mean, so far as you, there's no complaint that you have to register against them other than the chickens?
Well, what I'm trying to say to you is that if it's fifteen gallons a month, I'm not sure how that's going to be when it becomes thirty, sixty, and a hundred.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Drew Myers, I live at eighty-two Lake Street. You know, I, pretty narrow confines of what we're discussing here, odors and chemicals and so forth and so on, but I'm not understanding, you know, first, I'm sort of averse to a variance on that property and whether it, people change that property frequently, because he's the second owner in probably five, six years. So, you know, I think what my issue is, is that obviously, this is not like a little home brewing deal that he's going to do in his basement, okay? Or in the garage, because he's making this into a business, and it's a startup, he's testing the waters. But, I mean, what is the limit to what he can do? I would like to know that, one. I mean, what's the threshold of where, you know, what are you judging as the capacity of, say, the sewage and the water consumption that he can use? I'd like to know that. I mean, you know, he's saying he's going, you know, five, five, I have nothing against beer, I love it, you know? But, you know, so he's doing five kegs a week, I mean, what's the threshold here? What is the usage threshold that you're going to say, well, this is too much? I mean, in my mind, this is not a business, you know, he's talking about manufacturing, you know, it's more of an industrial thing. It's like, and there are numerous, you know, alternatives to his garage, you know, in a place that's more suitable for that type of, you know, I don't have an issue with the five gallons a week that he's going to store in the basement, he's going to give to his friends, you know, it's, but what's the threshold? You know, where, where do you draw the line and say, this is too much for the neighborhood? Aside from, you know, we could talk about the character of the neighborhood, it's residential, you know, what, you know, you're bringing a business into a community, but elders, Madeline's ninety years old, Floyd's in his eighties, they've lived on that street since, since the street was, okay? You know, so I think what, you know, that's basically the concern, aside from the amount of water that you're going to use, and the smell that it's contaminating. It's what is it developing into from this very small home brewing thing? You know, obviously, the gentleman has plans to grow this business, which is more power to him, that's a wonderful thing, but how much is he going to grow in my backyard? You know, I'm a, I buy him, you know? So, that's my concern, and I think, you know, when you make a decision, you need to, you know, give some consideration to the street, and the history of the street, and the people that live there, you know? And, or at least clarify, what's your threshold? You know, what, maybe Mr. Warner can provide that. When is he going to move his business on? You know, if he finds that he can sell to, you know, microbrewing and have a little niche market in town or in the restaurants, I mean, what's the threshold? You know, when does this become something that needs to move out of his garage?
Excuse me, I have a question in response to that for Carolyn. We, not only can we have a time limit, but if we're concerned about sort of the risk of nuisance, I assume we could place a limit on quantities produced if there were a consensus among the board members?
Yeah, I mean, if it were related to, you know, an issue about nuisance, but I don't know if the, the amount of production is, the concern is about what the impact to the water usage and sewage usage is, I don't know that we know what the maximum capacity would be as compared to any other stuff.
But we could ask, we could ask the applicant if he would consider some sort of limit that we would then make as a condition to the application, and then, and then if there were a one-year limit on the approval, that would give neighbors an opportunity to come back, and with hard data in terms of the basis for objections, instead of what is essentially speculative assumptions.
Well, this whole venture is a, this whole venture is a speculation, obviously.
Yeah.
It is, it's a speculation, and I don't know if Ms. Mesh would like, you know, a brewery next to her house. I mean, I don't know, maybe.
Right. Excuse me, I think Bob said it was.
When the applicant first made his, he said that he made fifteen gallons a month, and if that, it was successful doing thirty gallons a month, a month, then he would move. So, we would put a restriction on him, something like that.
Or we could consider that.
Why don't we even ask him?
Yeah, sure.
If he had a warrant.
Wait a minute, I had a question for you, Mr. Myers, because your wife indicated that she's been housebound and couldn't get out to determine whether or not there was any odor. I don't know if you've been housebound, I assume not.
No, I'm not housebound.
Have you, have you experienced any of the?
Well, you know, at this point in time, he's brewing, so he says, one day a week, and.
And that hasn't been a problem?
That doesn't bother me, but we're not talking about one day a week now anymore. You know, we're talking bringing in, I mean, we're here because of an employee, correct? Who is not an employee, so why are we here to begin with? But the issue is that he must grow a business, and he abuts my property, and I'm concerned about my property value, you know, it's a residential neighborhood. I mean, we're, you know, I mean, if you look at a brewery, go up to Williamsburg, you know, that's the size of a brewery, you know, Opa-OPA, or, you know. So, is that what we're talking about here, or?
Well, people do, the reason we have this ordinance is because people do engage in quote-unquote "home occupations" all over town.
Well, sure.
The wisdom, presumably, the wisdom behind the ordinance is to ensure the protections necessary for these home occupations and residential areas, but did we want to ask the applicant to intervene?
But, I mean, one thing we should just emphasize again, a condition of a home business is that it shall produce no noise, obnoxious odors, vibrations, glare, fumes, or electrical interference, which would be detectable to normal sensory perception beyond the law line.
Which means, if, that's automatically part of any decision we make, because it's in the ordinance, and there would be the right to bring a complaint to the building inspector and to demand an enforcement action.
And you've had no sensory perception?
But the business hasn't started yet, has it?
What?
It hasn't started for.
Well, I'm going to ask, when we, when we get to it, I'm going to ask the applicant to clarify. I thought he said, one time a month, he does fifteen gallons, he's going to go two times a month, he's going to brew a total of thirty gallons.
And he's been for a couple of years.
For a couple of years.
Well, we'll ask him about that.
I would like some clarification on that.
That, fair enough, we'll ask.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Fred Renato, I live in ninety Lake Street. I live right next door to John. My back door opens into the yard that faces his garage, so I've been a, I look directly into the garage where he does his brewing, and it's been going on for, hour long, a year and a half, and I spend a lot of time out in my yard. I'm friends with his chickens, they're not much of a problem, really. And I have, even being outside, probably thirty-five feet away from the front of the garage with the door open, you would never know that there was anything going on in there. No smell comes out. They bring materials in, they bring materials out, it's just like someone coming home from vacation and bringing their luggage into the house, you know? And I watch them, because I hope when they get done with beer, I get some. So, I pay attention, and I don't, I don't even see it happening a lot of the times. It's about as low-key as you could possibly imagine.
It basically sits in a container.
You don't see anything going on, it's all in the garage. And I have a good friend that has a small brewery in Tennessee, and in order to go from a setup like they have at fifteen gallons to anything larger, from my perspective of the things, you have to, it's a huge step up, you know? It takes a lot more equipment, it takes stainless steel tanks, and it, something that would never happen in a garage. So, there's a self-limiting factor involved in home brewing in that way, from what I understand. I'm sure if you ask John, he'll be able to tell you a lot more about that. But to go from one day a week brewing what they do now, which is, you know, completely unnoticed, to two days a month, which would be also completely unnoticed. So, from my perspective, the concerns that I've heard expressed here are just concerns about a future that is not in the works. I mean, none of that, it seems to me, it's been pretty clear that this is a, this is a foray into, let's make up the formulas, get them running, see if they're good, and if they can go anywhere higher than the fifteen gallons a shot, they would have to go somewhere else to do that, and that's what, my understanding, is the basis of this application.
So, from your personal observation, if he, say, went to four days a month, we're just talking about individual days a month.
Right.
Fifteen gallons each time.
Right.
It still would be unnoticed.
It would be unnoticed, but.
And that's based on your personal observation as an expert?
The only way that I could see that would become noticeable is if the volume per brewing day went way up, you know, then, then you might get, you know, more smell, but at fifteen, it's a tiny amount, really, when you're looking at this kind of thing, you know? And to be perfectly honest about it, I've gone over it sometimes when they were brewing, and even when you're in the garage, it doesn't smell that much, you know? It smells like somebody baking bread in their living, in their kitchen, you know? It's not, it's not a huge smell, and it's not a particularly noxious smell, you know? It's a grain, it's a grainy smell, but you certainly don't smell it outside of the garage, because I spend a lot of time in my yard, you know, it's probably happened, I don't know, twenty or thirty times, you know, during good weather, when I would be out there, and it's never been an issue.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, can you just say your address and name again?
Yes, Fred Renato, ninety Lake Street.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we have to get to the degree of self-limitation as to how many days we take.
Before we hear some of this?
Yeah, sure, just.
Sure. Do you want me to come up and address? Sure, we're going to let everyone speak who wants to, but our, because of the questions that have been asked already, we want to hear from the applicant on this issue of a possible limit on either the number of days or the volume, size of container.
First of all, the chickens are not running free anymore. I didn't realize, really, that was even an ordinance. They won't be running free, they aren't too, and will.
Which is an example of successful enforcement of the ordinance, but go ahead.
Exactly. The reality is twofold. We both have families, we're both busy, we both work full-time. For us to find more time than two weekends a month is going to be tough. We would love to brew every weekend, it's not, we don't have the time for it. The second part is that we hate brewing in that garage. I shouldn't say we hate it. It's a less-than-ideal system. As soon as we can show that we can sell beer and get out of there into a proper brewery that works every time, the same time, we want to get out of there. We don't want to grow the business past what we said, you know, maybe one extra day a month, but really it's.
Really, so, so you've, is that to say that you'd have no, you don't make a decision here, but you would have no objection to a one-year limit to give you a chance to determine?
Absolutely not.
And two, two fifteen-gallon batches a month?
I think three. That's possible.
Well, but if you'd agree to two, it would.
Well, I'd like to have the option to three, but, you know, if you find extra time.
Okay, but that's very helpful for us to know going into the next comments.
Sure.
I would think that people would appreciate that accommodation.
Sure, absolutely.
And reassurance that.
Right, I mean, we.
If this beer is good, you're not going to be doing it there.
Right, we really like the neighborhood, we like the character of the neighborhood, we really don't want to disrupt the neighborhood any more than we have by legally home brewing. You know, we just, we would like to have the blessing of everybody, you know, if it's a.
Okay, thank you. We'll hear from anyone else that'd like to speak, yes, ma'am.
My name is Luda Adams, and I'm a homeowner at seventy-two Lake Street. Basically, he's answered most of the concerns that I've had. I only, I have a couple other things that I just wanted to mention. My concern was, as Mr. Myers was, with the potential of an increase in traffic and strain on the sewer lines, because I've had backups in my solitude. This is particularly bothersome to me, because I have a son who's disabled, and his immune system is compromised, so anything like that is a danger to him. My son and his father, who's a primary caregiver, are both asthmatic, and they have both had reactions to the chemicals that are used in sanitizing beer-making equipment. My husband used to have a little carboy thing that he'd move beer in at home for himself for a while, but the chemicals bothered him too much. So, that is a concern of mine, is that being in the air. But if there's nothing that's, we're, what, three houses away, so that's not probably going to be an issue for us. And as far as an increased amount of traffic, the sidewalk on Lake Street is really bad. My son's in a power wheelchair and cannot use the sidewalk because of its condition, so he uses the street to go places, as do, I would say, just from my observation, sixty to seventy percent of the people who walk on the street walk in the street, not on the sidewalk because of its condition, and therefore, any increased amount of traffic would be a danger to them, as well as the number of children that are on the street, including another child who is also disabled. I'm very pleased to hear what he has to say about there being limits on how much he plans to brew in this, and again, I like to hear myself too, so no objection to that, but I appreciate the opportunity to have come and found out more about what the plans are and how it can be controlled and be to everybody's benefit. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Okay. Big step back, I may want to ask the applicant, if I could ask a question to the applicant, the concern about the smells from the cleansers, I assume there'd be no problem with a condition that anytime you're cleaning equipment, the garage would be closed, the door would be closed. Sure. So that, so that no. So that, so that no, um, odors from the materials you're using could emanate, or at least it would be substantially reduced chance that the odors would emanate from the garage and, and affect anyone else. Again, I keep, we should, I keep, we keep coming back to the section, subsection L that says there could be no dot, dot, dot fumes, which would be detectable beyond the lot line. But we could make it explicit, stated explicitly that the doors of the garage would have to be closed anytime those, those materials are being used. Um, which I think would be, versus a summer day where you have the garage door wide open, right, you know?
I think that's, that's a combination that can easily be, right, you're chomping, sure.
Um, Ms. Andrews, you have it?
Uh, yes, I'm just, uh, curious as to what kind of ventilation system there is now, because I believe that this is happening in the garage, or will happen in the garage. Um, and I believe that just, not just the brewing causes an odor, the chemicals cause an odor, and the fermenting causes an odor. I'm just wondering what kind of, um, ventilation system he has. And I believe that the, the fermenting, um, process is a, is a, is a very obnoxious sulfur, um, type of base odor that.
It's not what anyone has said, they said it smells a little bit like bread.
No, I think the fermenting process smells like sulfur, yeah.
The hydrogen, I did look into that. Um, the hydrogen sulfite is much more common in wine making, and there have, there are big case reports of that. Fermentation, in our experience, is odorless. Um, it's, like I said, it's a closed container. If you open that container up and you stick your head in it and you take a whip, it's pretty noxious, because it's, it's carbon dioxide. The yeast metabolizes the sugars, releases carbon dioxide and alcohol. Um, but during fermentation, those containers are closed with an airlock, so that air can escape, but, um, the odors have really never been an issue for us. I mean, we ferment, we ferment in our houses and closets, and we've never had a problem.
Carbon dioxide on the current chain, right?
Great.
So, what kind of ventilation system is it?
Well, the garage has, um, the garage has, at the moment, has a hood and a vent to the external air. Mostly to keep moisture out during the brews, so that we don't have a, a compromise in the building with rot. Um, if there were a problem, I know that people have, there was talk of maybe scrubbers, charcoal filter or something over the hood, from the hood to, to.
I think, I would be inclined to leave that to an enforcement action. We're not gonna get into code compliance, that's not, that's not this board. If somebody, the bottom line is, if somebody smells fumes, uh, beyond the lot line, they can call Mr. Hasbrook and the, the building inspector, who is also the zoning enforcement officer, and have him come down, and then he could address remediation directly with you.
Sure.
Um, and I assume we would hear about that a year from now if we, you come back to renew this, and if we have a one-year limit on. Um, I think we've, any other questions, anyone else from the public? The next steps for us would be to move to close the, the, I will, to, to, to close the public hearing, which means after that, we're, we're, we discuss openly in front of you, but, but no more input from the public or the applicant is permitted, so we can discuss our decision and make a motion and make a decision. Ms. Andrews, did you have a last remark?
Yeah, I, I do, and, and I guess it's maybe a procedural one, and maybe this, uh, something that the board can help me out with. Um, but I understand, and, and this is the as-of-right issue, um, that there is, um, a home business as-of-right if, if it's by its nature, uh, if of its limited size and scope, does not cause any significant outward manifestation. So, I guess I'm, I'm wondering if traffic, parking, um, and taxing of the public service or utility demand, I guess I'm wondering, is that something that the planning department initially decides? Does it need to be addressed, or do they make those decisions with the input of the Public Works Commission and the Board of Health?
Well, well, I think, as I understand, as I understand it procedurally, that section of the stat, ordinance is not in front of us because, um, we're not dealing with the section that allows it as-of-right. Rather, the section that's in front of us is, or, or am I, is that incorrect here?
I, I understand the limited nature of the, of the hearing, but I guess while I have knowledgeable people here.
The discussion at the front was before it was, he wasn't operating it as a business. Certainly, if he's going to operating it as a business, then he's got.
Then, then that is where we are now, and that is why we are interpreting the section of the ordinance that addresses home businesses, which is what we're doing right now. Carolyn, is that correct? Am I stating that correctly?
Right, and so, you know, um, we also, in the buy rights standard, has changed it so that even if you were seeing clients in your home, um, you could still do a buy right if you weren't seeing more than 25 per week. So, that's not even considered, you know.
A business.
Uh, or traffic that would be of consideration, um, you know, more than in, you know, standard, you know, people coming to visit you or what have you. So, that's been sort of the, the new threshold for.
Yes, the is that there should be no more than 25 visitors per week by clients, customers, contractors, or so forth.
Right, but the definition of home business, in, in, it seems to include in it that, that it's not a home business if it's, if its size and scope becomes too big for a home business. And I guess I'm just wondering, it seems as though that determination may have already been made, and I'm asking preliminarily if that decision's already been made by the planning department via the Public Works and the, the Board of Health, who have said that, that this is a problem.
I don't, I don't.
It is procedural, and asking that, and that it also says that it, there are things that are specifically excluded, and then they can be taken up, other things can be taken up by a case-by-case basis.
So, then we're gonna.
2.1.
The, the question never came up, because this is the first time the application came before the building department. So, this application to create a home-based business as a startup, um, you know, the applicant was already doing their own thing in, on their property at their home, that was not considered a business because it was just for personal use. So, the, the, so there was never a determination one way or the other, but as soon as there was a description about what the intention was, where there would be a partner that would be coming in, or employee that would be coming in that doesn't live on the premise, that's what triggers a special permit. So, there was never any analysis before that.
Can we also, that is, Julia, I, I think you're not looking at the part of the statute which says that, uh, that in which, that is, that a vocation so far all that, in which by its nature, of its limited size and scope, does not cause any significant outward manifestation, such as traffic generation, parking congestion, noise or air pollution, outdoor materials, which is uncharacteristic of or an additional disturbance to the residential neighborhood in which said property is located.
Right.
So, again, if any of that thing happens to come about, you can complain to Mr. Hasbrook. There's the recourse, the way.
I understand this question, this question is, goes, goes behind, back earlier, which is, where has been the analysis that there is, that this is a home business, right?
Well, I think, is it implicit, if we agree or vote to grant this, it's implicit.
That's right.
That we have made the determination that those other standards that are requirements of the section of the ordinance have been satisfied, is that fair to say?
Well, that's right, I think that Attorney Andrews' question is, does.
Has anyone else, and the answer is, I guess, is no.
No. But if they're not satisfied, then there's the possibility of a zoning enforcement.
Enforcement action.
I was, I was on the planning board when they first started home businesses. And the, um, planning department, and, and Tim came up with a proposal for change in zoning, and the planning board came up with the word, the wording. And then it's approved by the city council, and then it has changed over the years because it was too restrictive the way we originally planned it. And so now, it's really quite, um, friendly toward the, toward the applicant. You know, and I, I think it's much better than it was when we first did it. Like, one person couldn't do, run a machine shop in that garage for their own purposes, I'm sure.
I guess what I'm saying is that if you, before you get to, he has a right to have a home business as-of-right, you need to, to decide whether or not this is a, a home business or a mini manufacturing, um, you know, undertaking. So, and, and from what I can see, the definition of a home business can't cause any significant outward manifestation. And I get, and I guess that what you folks are telling me is that by granting the special permit, you are also making that decision that it is the definition of a home business.
I think that's the best, I think that's the best way.
Yep.
To describe what's happening here.
Okay.
And I, by the way, don't have a problem with that. But, I mean, if we, if we vote, so I appreciate you pointing it out to the board. Um, as part of a vote to approve the application for the special permit, we are determining that, um, that the home business requirements as-of-right have been satisfied and moro, and then, and then we move on to the, the, which would allow it as-of-right.
But actually, all of that, I don't think we need to determine that these have been satisfied. What we do is that we determine that these are conditions which apply to them, which they must comply with in order for the special permit to.
They're conditions by virtue of the ordinance.
They're conditions by virtue of the ordinance.
To ensure that you, those things are, so that there is compliance with the ordinance. I mean, that's the whole, that's the point of special permits, sort of, look at this elevated, um.
And we could make that an explicit condition. It's redundant, but as part of our vote or decision to approve the special, I mean, it's, it's stating, it's restating what's true as a matter of law, that, that the, that the applicant has to adhere to all of the conditions for a home business.
And then, since it's a matter of law, we don't have to do.
Well, that's true too.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, is this board making the determination that it is a home business pursuant to the definition of home businesses in the ordinance?
Yes.
Yeah, because if you look at 350 10.2, it says all home businesses, um, where dot, 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 there's, uh, with any partner who is not a resident of the home requires a special permit.
Right.
So, it's a given that we're talking about a home business here.
Right, but I'm saying, have we, have we skipped the home business step? Have we qualified this as a home business? If it is a location trade small business under 350 2.1, if it is a small business, which is conducted, which is limited in its size and scope, so that it can be there. And I guess that what, what I'm, what I'm hearing from the folks who live there is that it, that, that its size and scope may be too big to qualify because of the.
There's been no complaints about.
Of the public service and utilities thing.
There's been no complaints about the size of scope.
Right, the only thing we've heard is that, is speculation.
Yes.
As to what may happen.
Heard that there have been backups, and that this sewer system is horrendously old and in poor condition, and any other strain on it is going to be a problem. And that's what I'm seeing.
That's not what DPW tells us.
DPW wasn't aware of the problem.
You know, we've got to go for something.
Go ahead, Karen, excuse me.
So, I guess I'm just asking, can we, can we say definitively then that this board is saying that this applicant and this business qualifies as a home business under the statute?
If we.
If we prove it, sure.
Okay.
That's reasonable.
Okay.
Right, so, so, um, so just to clarify again, DPW has no concerns, DPW, there was one person at DPW who doesn't, didn't, um, know about the backups in particular, but the, the, um, analysis also comes from this sewage treatment plant operator, John Hall. He did know about the backups, and he was aware of that, but this, but again, sort of the entire department analysis of this, one person didn't know about it, but checked with the superintendent of the sanitary, um, system. And, um, the feedback was that this is not gonna add any additional strain on the system. Um, it's much smaller than any new single-family house would, or any existing single-family house if there's an excessive use of, of wastewater and water. So, there was absolutely no.
We're not talking about Niagara Falls.
I would like to make a motion. Talking about to close the public hearing, if, if a person had a 15 gallon. Oh, I didn't know that one.
Okay, yes.
I'd like to move that we close the public hearing.
Well, I got one question.
Yes, sir.
Before you close the hearing.
Yeah.
So, we're talking about a year here? Is that what you, I was kind of hearing, we're gonna do a special permit? We may come back in a year to review that?
We haven't made any determination about that.
Right.
But you're gonna discuss that possibility?
I am inclined to propose that, yes.
Is it going to affect?
For what that's for, I can only speak for myself.
Okay. And then, let me just understand further, you know, if, if they're not in compliance with the rules and regs that you've just specified, then we can make our individual complaints to the powers that be.
To the building inspector, he is the zoning.
And when he, in the brewer, Mr. Warner, when he feels he's reached whatever capacity it is, then he will move his business to a larger facility.
Well, that we don't control, that's something he has said.
Yep.
Yes, so we have, we have faith in Mr. Warner that when he reaches that, that magic number, to move out of his garage, that he will. Okay.
Yeah, he has said the garage is limited, it's not an optimal space, and that he would need larger space.
Yes, I'm being sarcastic.
I, you know, I just, I'm a little leery of that, that's all.
Okay, okay, motion, a second on the motion to close the public hearing, is that?
Is there anybody else we wanted to say, and before we close?
Yes.
I just have, I have a concern for like the worst-case scenario. What if there's a spill? What if there's an accident? Um, is there insurance to help cover and remediate?
I think I.
Um, a spill of.
Chemicals?
The, um, I mean, the, we never have more than two and a half gallons of that chemical on hand.
Diluted.
Diluted, right. We have, uh, it's, comes packaged, concentrated, do you want me to stand up to you?
Yeah, in powder or liquid?
It is a liquid concentrate.
The, the PBW is a powder.
The PBW is a powder, that's correct.
Star Sand is a liquid, and it's a concentrate that comes in about, uh, a 14-ounce container.
What's the most that you would need at one time of each of those crop materials?
Uh, say, two and a half gallons of the diluted Star Sand, and.
Sure.
And how much?
That, that lasts us a month. That, that we use until it's, until we feel that its potency has been diminished.
And what about the other one, the?
PBW is.
PBW?
A couple of gallons diluted once again.
It's the same thing.
But I thought that comes in powder.
That's a powder.
Then you dilute the powder in, in, in water.
So, two gallons diluted?
Yeah.
So, we're not talking about.
We don't have bats of, of chemicals.
We're not talking about Love Canal here, okay. All right, um, second, uh, mo, second on the motion to close the public, last?
We are good to go there?
I think that's it, okay.
Okay, we're going up for a beer afterwards.
Yeah.
Um, the second.
Okay, now, in favor of closing the public hearing, that's unanimous. Um, we can have a motion on the application, and a second, and then discussion, and then a vote, or, or a motion to amend based on that discussion, that's what I suggest.
Um, okay.
Or we could start with discussion, and it doesn't matter really. Okay, why don't we have a motion on the application?
Well, I move that we approve the application, uh, for one year with the condition that they have no more than three brews a month. So, for a year or a year and a half?
Three 15-gallon.
I was just gonna say, you might do a year and a half, because you said it was gonna take six months to start up.
Sure, yeah, so a year.
That gets a year of production.
A year and a half and no more than three.
15-gallon.
15-gallon.
Batches.
Batches a month.
And?
Um, with the closed garage door.
With the garage door closed at the time of, um.
During brewing.
Cleaning thing, although I don't really see that that necessary, but, you know.
I'd like to do that, somebody, we have people with sense of, special sensitivities.
During brewing and cleaning?
During brewing and cleaning.
During the cleaning, it's not, it's not brewing, you know?
Cause during.
During brewing and cleaning?
I'd say just during cleaning.
Okay, during, uh, the time equipment is cleaned. Do we wanna have a limit on how much of these two materials can be on hand? Two point eight five gallons diluted, or two gallons? I don't think the applicant had an objection to it.
Well, I mean, I suppose, but.
It would address the.
I'm not really on a micro.
But it would address the concerns of some of the neighbors about the possible extent of a spill or contamination, and then the applicant doesn't object.
But, but if you, the applicant has to buy it in a certain quantity.
But he already took that into account when he said two and a half gallons.
No, but that's how much he mixes it into.
But that's, but he can't be holding.
He could have five gallons of the concentrate.
Well, I would say enough on hand to mix two and a half gallons. Well, if people, I mean, if the consensus is not to. Well, if people, I mean, if the consensus is not to, that's micromanaging, I can be outvoted.
Is it reasonable, I don't, I'm not in the business, so I don't know if it's reasonable to suggest enough of the chemicals on a month-to-month basis? Is it purchased in that manner?
I mean, it's purchased in, at this point, in consumer adherence...
You know what they do in other boards, they say you can talk to your partner loud. That's what they do in great hotels, they literally do that.
Oh, that's good.
That's a good one.
I think that's challengeable. I would just suggest, I mean, the other piece of it is, you know, he's gotta have, and I mean, I'm sure his homeowners insurance is gonna wanna know this is going on, there are other mechanisms to deal with problems that happen on the site, so, you know, not knowing exactly how much might be necessary, or let's say there's a sale at Costco, and lots of get a bunch on sale, you know? I, I'm not sure that necessarily limiting the cleaning compounds is, would take care of the problem. I think there are other mechanisms in place that would address that if there happens to be something catastrophic that goes on.
Okay, if that's, if that's how people feel.
Could we sort of go over the motion, and what we have so far?
Sure, what I have is, and I wanted to clarify this, to approve for eighteen months with a condition that there are no more than three fifteen-gallon batches brewed per month, and the garage door shall be closed during cleaning, or cleaning and brewing?
Cleaning.
Okay. And that's all I have, is it, did I miss anything?
I think that's enough, but...
Second on the motion? Second.
Yep, second.
Terms of discussion, I, from everything I've heard, the evidence versus the speculation, meaning evidence based on testimony and personal knowledge versus speculation about future events. I am satisfied that the requirements for a home business are satisfied here, that what is being proposed will not cause significant outward manifestations such as traffic generation, parking congestion, noise or air pollution, outdoor material storage, and public service or utility demand, especially taking into account the information provided us to the DP, by the DPW, not just the individual who wasn't aware of the problem, but the supervisor who was. And I'm not going to read out loud subsections A through M, but I am satisfied, based on everything I've heard, that those requirements for a home business have, those conditions have been met based, taking into account everything that I've heard here tonight. I want that on the record. Any other discussion?
No, I think you've said it exactly right, that this does constitute a home business as defined by the ordinance, and that it does meet the ordinance's requirements.
And that there require, further discussion that the requirements of 350-10.12, based on all of the evidence that I have heard tonight, are also satisfied, or are not applicable.
And I know also that this has been going on for a year or longer, and that of all the folks that are here, nobody's complained about odor, fumes, anything so far, and I think it's as David has indicated, that it's a concern about the future, and I think you have a neighbor who's agreed to limitations, so that it will not turn into any problem. But as we've said, if there are issues, please go to the building inspector.
Because I would add that if any of these requirements are not satisfied going forward, as you've just said, and as we've said many times, there is recourse, because that would constitute a violation of the North Hampton zoning ordinance, and it should be actionable through complaint to the zoning enforcement officer, who is the building commissioner, who is Louis Hasbrook. That's...
And I know him.
Any other discussion? All, a vote all in favor?
That's who was leaving tonight when I said I...
That's unanimous. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. We already did the...
Yes.
Anything else, Carolyn, can we move to close the hearing?
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
I'm moving to adjourn.
Second to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, Elizabeth moved to adjourn. Very second, all in favor, that's unanimous, thank you.